All right. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, September 8, 2025. I now call the meeting to order. It's time for the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we'll have Commissioner Klepek lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anna, will you please read the voice roll call?
Chair Harland.
Here.
Vice Chair Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Commissioner Klepek.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade is absent. Commissioner Dixon.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
All right, we have no announcements or presentations tonight, so that takes us to public comments, matters not listed on the agenda. Public comments will be heard at this time on items that are not listed on the agenda but are within our jurisdiction. I'll open public comment, and if you'd like to speak, please come to either lectern. And if you're participating by Zoom, please use the raise hand option, or by phone, the star nine when you're called to speak. Anybody in chambers wish to speak? All right, before we go to online, just acknowledge that Commissioner Andrade is present. Okay, Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or phone?
Cynthia McDonald, you may provide your public comment.
Good evening, Commissioners. We have another outreach meeting this week regarding the citywide rezoning initiative. I encourage staff to improve the structure and the communication of these meetings as public trust is eroding. A council member recently described the situation in Costa Mesa as reflecting a, quote, "creeping mindset of," quote, "we know better." Over the weekend, a planner in another city shared with me that the city's efforts appear to be more about checking boxes than meaningful engagement. We're paying a lot of money to just check boxes. Last week, I received a late notice for a meeting at a coffee shop, which I couldn't attend due to a scheduling conflict. What we truly need is a well-publicized town hall-style event similar to the Speak Up Newport forums held by our neighboring city. Please note that Newport Beach convened two advisory committees on housing, demonstrating a level of public involvement that Costa Mesa has yet to match. Our residents deserve the same. Finally, we have yet to see the visioning promised under Measure K. For reference, cities like Santa Ana offer strong examples of what visioning looks like in practice. I encourage everyone to explore these models to better understand what our community should be striving for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Anna?
There's no one else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I will close public comments. Takes us to Planning Commissioners' comments and suggestions. Let's start to my left, Commissioner Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'll start by saying there's a city council meeting tomorrow, an adjourned regular meeting of the city council, so attend if you would like to. Also, tomorrow morning is the swearing-in of a new director for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, Cheyenne Wright, who currently serves as vice chair of the Parks Commission, will be sworn in as a director for Division Five of the Sanitary District. So congratulations, Cheyenne. Also, tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. is a pop-up event for the housing initiative that we're doing. That'll be at Moon Goat Greenhouse at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow. So attend if you can, or if you want to, or if you're just going to be there anyways, working. Also, for neighborhoods where we all belong, there will be a workshop focused on North Costa Mesa and the Sobeka area on September 10, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Fieldwork, which is 150 Pollerino Ave. Also, attend that one if you can or if you want to. And finally, Art Venture is this weekend, well, at least the beginning of the Art Venture, is September 13, from 11:00 to 3:00 at the Norma Hertzau Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Thank you so much. I was not able to make the pop-up event that was on, I believe, Friday regarding neighborhoods where we all belong, and just wanted to reiterate what the public commenter said. I think we've all said this at some point or another, but if at all possible in the planning for this issue, if we can get a town hall-type meeting together, that would be extraordinarily helpful. But I think if a lot of people, you have a lot of momentum, and we can get more of sort of a, kind of a critical mass of residents all together to kind of discuss these things. I do appreciate the different locations around the city and the pop-ups and that effort to do that, but I do think something is missing when we have a smaller groups spread out, at least for something as important as citywide rezoning or Fairview Developmental Center. And, you know, I'd just like to know for the folks who've been in the city for a long time, you know, Costa Mesa has a robust history of citizen commissions and committees on things just like this. So I'd like for, you know, if staff can, you know, talk to city manager about maybe advancing that to the city council, or we can, you know, separately talk to city council members about potentially coming up with a committee like that. But I just think that we hear repeatedly that different folks from commissioners to council members to members of the public are expressing some concerns with the engagement on this, and so whatever we can do to increase that would be much appreciated. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Rojas. Okay, Commissioner Klepek?
None for me.
All right, Commissioner Andrade?
Yes, first I wanted to do a quick highlight. This past Saturday, a local nonprofit, which I work for, Orange County United Way, kicked off their five-year strategic plan across all 34 cities, and I had the fortune to lead a walk in Costa Mesa. And my team and I decided to make it an art walk. And I have to say, I was so impressed and also disappointed in myself how I lived here for so long and missed so many great highlights. We started off at South Coast Plaza, crossed over the bridge, and were able to appreciate all the great installations and pieces that are nicely tucked, sculptures that are nicely tucked away across our city. But it was, it definitely gave for a proud moment, so I was able to highlight the great work that we're doing here in planning. Also, our arts commissioner chair, I should say, Alisa Ochoa was there, so she also was able to grieve a grave highlight to those that attended because they were all local Costa Mesis, Costa Messens that were there. So really wonderful to be, to represent in that space as well. In addition to all the great activities that Commissioner Martinez shared, Art Venture is definitely top of the list for the family, so highly encourage you all to come, check out all the great art. It's a great opportunity also to bring the kiddos, to encourage their creativity, and see how they can be part of maybe our utility boxes program and so many other efforts. But even before you go to Art Venture at 11:00, at 9:00 a.m., there is a California Biodiversity Day happening in our very own nature park. Did you know that Costa Mesa has its very own nature-protected park? We're working towards that at Fairview, Fairview Park. It's an opportunity to, again, just walk alongside some of the experts that can highlight some of the history, the archaeology that is preserved there, and also the endangered species that we have protected there. So great opportunity to engage in that way. That's all. And thank you all, these are the audience, for coming. I'm sure you're here to support a great agenda item, but we appreciate your presence and commentary.
Thank you. Vice Chair Zick?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, nothing from me as well. Takes us to our consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar tonight. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless any member of the Planning Commission staff or public has pulled an item. Do we have any items pulled tonight?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Can I get a motion on Consent Calendar, item number one?
I move to accept Consent Calendar, item number one.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Dixon, second by Commissioner Martinez. It's a call for the question.
Commissioner Dixon, if you don't mind. That motion carries 7-0.
Okay. We have one public hearing item tonight. Anna, will you please read the title for public hearing item number one?
Public hearing item number one, call to review PAPL-25-0004, zoning administrator approval of a minor conditional use permit, PMCP-24-0029, for a new wireless communication facility at 2065 Placentia Avenue. Please note, we have received public comments on this item. This is a call for any expertise communications.
Commissioners, any expertise communications? Vice Chair Zick?
I attempted to gain access to public storage. I was unsuccessful in doing that, and I drove around the Federal Avenue neighborhood and the surrounding streets.
Okay. Commissioner Dixon?
I spoke with Mr. Volzeneck regarding this last week, and then I also visited the site.
Okay. All right, I will turn it over to Mr. Arios to present the item.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Commissioners. Justin Arios, Associate Planner. As and described, the item before you is a call to review zoning administrator approval of minor conditional use permit for a new wireless communication facility. Specifically, the request would allow the installation of a new 55-foot-tall wireless communication facility camouflaged as a monopine for AT&amp;T, which is shown as the green dot on this image on the slide. The proposed monopine is located at the western end of an existing mini warehouse site with another existing monopine for a different carrier, Verizon, located to the south of the proposed location, which is shown as the blue dot. There is an additional facility for another carrier, T-Mobile, located on a separate public storage mini warehouse site located at 2099 Placentia Avenue. As part of the application, an alternative sites analysis provided as Attachment 7 was conducted in which several candidate sites were reviewed and determined not to be viable to close the carrier's coverage gap. Also, an electronic magnet energy, or EME, report, which is provided as Attachment 8, was submitted, demonstrating the proposed project will comply with the applicable Federal Communications Commission, or FCC, standards. The project site is located along Placentia Avenue between West 20th Street and Hamilton Street, with one driveway that provides site access from Placentia Avenue. The property has a general plan land use designation of light industrial and a zoning designation of general industrial. Properties to the north, south, and east across Placentia have light industrial land use designations and general industrial zoning designations. The property to the north is developed with a 14-unit live-work residential development, Brickyard West. The property to the south is developed with an existing extension of the public storage use. And the properties to the east across Placentia Avenue are developed with various automotive uses. The properties to the west have low-density residential land use designations and single-family residential zoning designations and are developed with single-family residential houses. On July 17, 2025, the city's zoning administrator approved the project, concluding that the project would be consistent with federal law and with adherence with federal health and safety regulations, would not present any health and safety concerns. As part of the zoning administrator decision and consideration, a total of 14 public comments, all in opposition, were received, including a public comment with 92 signatures against the new cell tower. Primary concerns raised were noise associated with construction and maintenance, proximity to a residential neighborhood, RF emission and health impacts to home values and aesthetics. On July 24, 2025, Councilmember Reynolds submitted an application for review of the approval to be considered by the Planning Commission. The council member was concerned that many residents have raised a variety of concerns about the potential impacts, especially on this mixed-use corridor. The subject review is intended to provide the Planning Commission with an opportunity to review the requested minor conditional use permit to allow the new wireless facility. The Planning Commission's hearing is a de novo hearing in which the Planning Commission may consider the project in its entirety. The Planning Commission may consider all aspects of the project and is not required to limit the discussion to the issues raised in the call to review application. Jurisdictions are highly regulated as to when and how they can deny wireless communication applications. Jurisdictions may not impose an effective prohibition on wireless communication facilities. An effective prohibition is one that prevents a wireless carrier from closing a significant gap in service coverage provided by that carrier. As such, wireless carriers must submit gap coverage analysis with their application, demonstrating that the subject location is needed to close service gaps. As previously mentioned, the applicant submitted an alternative sites analysis provided with this gap coverage analysis. Additionally, jurisdictions are not permitted to consider radio frequency, or RF, emissions for the purpose of evaluating a wireless communication facility. That is the responsibility of the FCC. Federal law prohibits the city from denying a wireless application based on concerns about RF emissions when the applicant has demonstrated that its facilities will comply with the FCC standards. Also, as part of this project, and as previously mentioned, the applicant submitted a report demonstrating that the proposed project would comply with the applicable FCC standards. Wireless communication facilities are evaluated against findings in Section 13-29G2 and 1344B of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code. The findings require that the project be compatible with nearby developments, not be detrimental to nearby properties or the public, health, safety, or welfare, be consistent with the general plan, and represent the minimum height needed to achieve reasonable signal transmission. Lastly, all planning applications must comply with the review criteria that addresses neighborhood compatibility, safety, and compatibility of design, compliance with applicable performance standards, and consistency with the general plan. Pursuant to Costa Mesa Municipal Code, Section 13-29D, three types of the public notification were completed no less than 10 days prior to this public hearing, including the mail notice, onsite posting, and the newspaper publication. As of the date of the report, there was one written public comment that was received and attached to the report as Attachment 10. There were three additional public comments that were received prior to the noon deadline and were provided to the commission. The Planning Commission may take the following actions: either uphold the zoning administrator's decision and approve the project, approve the project subject to modified conditions of approval, reverse or reverse the zoning administrator's decision and deny the project. If the Planning Commission believes that there are insufficient facts to support the findings for approval, the Planning Commission must deny the application, providing facts in support of the denial, and direct staff to incorporate the findings into a resolution for denial. If the project is denied, the applicant could not submit a substantially same type of application for six months. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA under Class 3 for new construction, and uphold the zoning administrator's conditional approval of minor conditional use permit for a new wireless communication facility. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant also has a presentation prepared to present as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Arios. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Dixon?
Quick question. On the staff report, page 52, there's a figure 2 for existing installation. I'm just, is that a photograph, or is that a drawing, or... It appears to be what's there now, but shadows seem a little off and...
It was a Google Earth or Google Maps.
Okay.
Yeah, I was able to drop back there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I think it was potentially, it was a couple of years ago, I believe.
Okay. And then, under the findings and those things, is there any definition in there regarding what is considered detrimental? So it says it should be detrimental to surrounding properties and uses. What, is that just a common English definition of detrimental, or is there, does staff have criteria they use?
I don't know off the top of my head if there is a definitive definition for detrimental.
I'm just curious if there's something in the code or in the wireless stuff that's different from the common definition of that.
It's not defined in the code.
What's that?
It's not defined in the code.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Rojas?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions here. On page 87, it talks about, there's a statement that says, "AT&amp;T typically does not locate facilities on elementary schools and prefers separation between them and wireless telecommunications facilities." So that's the first question is, do we have any reason and a logical explanation as to why that is the case?
Not personally, but that might be a better question for the applicant.
Okay. Which brings me to the next question, which is right above that. It says candidates 1 through 4 for the alternative sites, but all of them are listed to be elementary schools. There wasn't one that isn't, and the only other, the fifth option, Canyon Park, presents a line-of-site issue for them. So is there a reason why only elementary schools were selected as alternative sites versus anything else?
Yeah, that I can't elaborate on. The applicant may better be able to kind of elaborate the methodology and thought process for those candidate sites.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right, Vice Chair Zick?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arios, for your presentation. In terms of the gap in coverage analysis, is that something that the city studied and confirmed and agreed with, or is it the sort of nature that you kind of have to take the applicant's conclusion at face value?
So yeah, we do rely on the technical expertise in the specific findings, but we do review the specific study to note, if there's anything that may raise red flags.
Okay. And then, it's kind of a nit, but on page 30 of the staff report, at the very bottom, it's referring to the presence of another 55-foot monopine, and on page 28, it indicates that that other monopine is actually 50 feet. So just to clarify, is the existing monopine 50 or 55?
So the 50-foot monopine is referring to the facility at 2099 on the other public storage facility. This, the one on this same site is 55 feet.
Okay, so could you go to page 2 of your presentation?
Yeah, so there is three facilities. The third one that is referenced on page 28 is more north on a separate property.
I can't see page 2. So repeat what you just said.
Yeah, so the facility that is referenced on page 28 is the one that is more north of this property on a separate public storage facility. That one is 50 feet. The one on this same facility that is in blue, I describe on page 22, and when it was approved, and that one was, it is a 55-foot.
And the 50-foot monopine that's on the adjacent property is actually of a palm tree.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yes.
So when you say monopine, it's not really that, it's a monopalm?
It's a monopalm.
Not to, okay. And then, I also have a question about the school sites. I'll save it for the applicant. If a property owner on federal was approached by a cell carrier, said, hey, we'd like to put a tower in your backyard, pay a bunch of money, would they be allowed to agree to that and enter into a contract to have a monopine put in their backyard?
Feasibly, yes. And then, the subsequent, whatever facility proposed would be subject to whatever, wherever it lies in the table from our antenna section.
Really?
I believe they are permitted in the residential zone, provided they meet the height and other aspects. I can confirm that, though.
Okay. I was kind of hoping the answer would be no. Thank you. No more questions.
Okay. Any other? Commissioner Martinez?
I think I just want to clarify, and especially for the public, what basic things we are allowed to consider as we talk about this, because it says here, and federal law says, that we cannot impose an effective prohibition which would prevent closing a significant gap. So there's, there's a bunch of different things that were cited in the staff report and in public comments. So I just want to clarify, what actually can we consider while looking at this application? Like, what, what realistic development standards are we allowed to look at while we're talking about this tonight?
Yes, we are looking at the setback to the proposed facility, so those would need to comply with our normal setback requirements for structures and that sort of stuff. Additionally, we would be reviewing it for aesthetic purposes. You know, the old version was just the standard poles that had no types of disguise, so if this were to come in just normally, we would definitely be encouraging some sort of disguise to help fit with the existing surrounding neighbor, neighborhood.
And specifically, there are the review criteria and findings that you need to make for the item. So the request requires a subset of findings listed on pages 13 through, I believe it's 16, of the staff report. The zoning administrator made those findings, but that is what the Planning Commission can review as part of the call to review this evening.
Okay, so even with federal law saying, like, everything that it's saying, because in various places in the staff report, I think it says, we can't consider effects to property values, effects to, like, the community opinion, I think it said in one place, but we are allowed to consider our MCUP findings.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Arios?
Yeah, and if I may clarify too, I pulled up the table. So for the residential zone specifically, we break down the different types of antennas. So the one antenna type that we are talking about tonight, which is a communication antenna transmitting, that one specific type would be prohibited in the residential zones. There are other types of antennas that could feasibly be proposed, such as a communication antenna that is receiving, amateur radio antennas, as well as satellite dish antennas, both receiving and transmitting.
Another question?
I do have another question. And it goes back to the issue of property value. So on the bottom of page 28, I think you clarify or you characterize what would have to be provided to consider effect on property value, and it says, without substantial supporting evidence, that it couldn't be, courts have generally held that that couldn't constitute grounds for denial. So what would constitute, in your mind, substantial supporting evidence? Or let me ask the question this way. If a realtor and a licensed property appraiser generated a report, looked at... If a realtor and a licensed property appraiser generated a report, looked at property values in the area, looked at comparables, did an analysis, and drew a conclusion relating property values to the presence or absence of something like a monopine, would that, in your mind, satisfy this requirement for providing the substantial supporting evidence?
So generally, when we're looking through the findings, we would have to look, and I think you're speaking a little bit to the finding that this is not detrimental to the property. And typically, we don't take into account property value when dealing with a detrimental impact. It would be more from an aesthetic component or any other prescribed standards in the municipal code. But, but the property value sometimes is, it can be practically related to that, but not directly correlated with that.
So if a homeowner had a concern that this would negatively affect their property value, and if they could prove that fact to you, are you saying it would be irrelevant to your consideration? Or are you saying, no, if they could prove that fact, that's very relevant?
I would say that the consideration for what would be detrimental to a property would not take into account property value impacts.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I'm not sure if this is for staff or the applicant. Do we have an idea of how many, I don't know, customers are being impacted by this communications gap? No reference.
That might be better for the applicant. They might know, yeah. I'm not too sure.
From what we're working from, AT&amp;T is just saying, we have a gap and we need it here. This is the best place. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dixon.
Quickly, have you seen the public comment pictures? Do you know which one this is? It's the other monopine? Or, I don't believe it's the...
Yeah, so that would be the one on the same site. So that would be this blue dot here.
And were the conditions when that was originally improved in the staff report, when that was originally approved, did that require the same sort of screening and aesthetic treatment? Because, no offense to anybody here who works for that company, that's ugly. And it's not screened at all. It's just basically an antenna with ugly green stuff on it, instead of a tree hiding an antenna.
Yeah, I'm not super familiar with that approval, but generally, we would include a condition that it would be maintained and kept as a disguised monopine.
I'd like to request that staff check on that.
Yeah, we could definitely look into it. And generally speaking, our opportunity to kind of ensure that improvements are made when it is less than ideal looking is whenever they come in for a permit to make any improvements or swap out equipment to the facility. At that time, we can potentially ask them to...
And let's check to make sure we don't have conditions of approval that require maintaining the screening on that particular one in the zoning administrator or the planning commission, whoever did that one?
We can take a look at that.
Okay. And then, I saw a picture, I believe also, of the palm one, and that's equally as unscreened. I believe that's, where was that? I apologize. Maybe it was in our staff report or in another one, but, or maybe it was my looking when I drove by there. Oh, here it is. This particular one? Again, that's a tiny little bit better, but it's, it's a bunch of antennas sticking out of a palm tree as opposed to being screened.
Yeah, we could look into both of them, but the fact that they have MCU Ps, that's at least a good sign that hopefully we should have some teeth to be able to require some improvements when...
All right, thank you.
All right, just two quick questions, Mr. Arios. One has to do with history of approving these. So based on the staff report, the, the monopalm, I guess at 2099 Placentia, was approved in 1998. So we're talking twenty-seven years at this point. Has the city approved anything prior to that, do you know? Or is this just a, is that the earliest?
For the one at 2099 Placentia, I believe that was the earliest approval. I believe the one on this site might have had a prior approval prior to that, the one referenced in 2007. I think there was potentially one prior to that, I think in like 2000 for the initial construction of that facility.
Okay. And our regulations allow for citing of multiple facilities on a single parcel?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I would like to open the public hearing, if we don't have any more questions, and ask whether the applicant or the applicant's representative is present. If you'd like to come to either podium, please state your name for the record and also tell us if you've read the conditions of approval and if you agree with them.
My name is John McDonald.
Let me get your, go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is John McDonald. I have read the conditions of approval and I agree with them. I would like to give a brief presentation regarding the proposed wireless facility at 2065 Placentia Avenue, to give you kind of a brief overview of the project, kind of address the gap in coverage that we have, and then address some of the public comments that we received for the earlier, the zoning administrator hearing. Can you go to the next slide, please, Justin? So this map shows the existing AT&amp;T facilities. It also shows the search ring. The red ring is the geographic boundary that has the gap in coverage. Even though that there are existing wireless facilities, they do not address the gap in coverage. The location at 2065 Placentia Avenue is centrally located to address this gap in coverage while being in the appropriate zoning district, which is General Industrial. This is a brief zoning information with the overlay of the red ring. So the site is, sorry, could you go back for me, Justin? Thank you. So the site is zoned General Industrial with a general plan designation of light industrial. Wireless facilities are allowed, are in allowed use in this district. The zoning administrator approved the project in July, but a city council member filed the call for review, which is why I'm here with you tonight. It's important to note that the area surrounding the ring is almost entirely residential, which we talked about earlier, is prohibited for wireless facilities. This limited the number of viable properties AT&amp;T could pursue. So if you look, the light purple is the industrial area, and all the properties surrounding the light purple are residential. In regards to the question on elementary schools, the reason they were discussed is because in the zoning code, the elementary schools do allow for wireless facilities. So it is an option that we looked at, but they were too close to existing sites. Could you please go to the next slide, Justin? So this is a map of existing AT&amp;T sites denoted by the black and the proposed facility denoted by the red. That is the existing coverage AT&amp;T has, and the proposed facility is trying to address that coverage gap. Next slide, Justin. This is standalone coverage. Before we move on, I want to discuss, actually, could you go back for me, Justin? I want to discuss the legend. So we have three different colors here. We have green, we have like a light red, purplish color, and we have a yellow. The green coverage represents coverage that is suitable for in-vehicle, in-building, and outdoor use for cell phones. Yellow is only suitable for in-vehicle and outdoor, and red is only suitable for outdoor. So basically, that means that if you are in an area that has red, if you are in a building, or you are in a vehicle, you will have dropped calls and reduced coverage, which is what we're trying to address. Next one for me, Justin. And this is what the coverage map will look like if the proposed facility is installed. Okay, so regarding some of the public comments, there were several. I want to start with addressing the health and safety emissions. So many residents expressed concerns about health impacts from RF emissions, and we take these concerns very seriously. That's why AT&amp;T has a third-party EME consultant review every project that we do. This facility has been reviewed by the certified engineer, and it shows that ground-level exposure is well within safety standards. The project compliance is well within FCC safety limits, and it has been verified. All evidence shows that the facility will operate safely within federal health and safety guidelines. The next comment that I saw frequently was regarding the aesthetics. We've talked a little bit about that tonight. So neighbors are concerned about aesthetics, specifically whether the faux pine will look realistic. So we have it set up so that no antennas will protrude beyond the foliage. Equipment cabinets are hidden inside an existing storage unit completely out of sight. The design matches an existing monopine already in sight, ensuring consistency. That facility, including the monopalm on the adjacent facility, are quite old. As we discussed, they're about twenty years. New facilities look significantly better. If you would like an example, off of Irvine Boulevard, where the church is overlooking Back Bay, there's a faux yuc that was built maybe within five years that looks really, really good. These facilities will look significantly better than the existing. There's also conditions of approval that require a high-quality, realistic design. They're imposed maintenance conditions, conditions number eight through twelve, and they ensure that the faux foliage remains dense, green, and in good condition over time. And then, just one more thing to note, the newer facilities, they're more durable and they retain their aesthetic quality over time much better than other facilities that are older. The property value concerns. So some residents fear the facility would reduce property values. So what'll help with that is the stealth thing like Justin spoke to earlier. It's not a monopole. So the peer review literature regarding drops in home values is dubious at best, especially when comparing to other neighborhood factors. Many analyses conclude that any impacts are hard to distinguish from normal market variability. And there is a study by David Widowski, which actually discusses how small cells have a marginal increase in property values over time, maybe about a ten-year period. So all in all, there's not a lot of evidence that shows a well-designed stealth facility will reduce values. Could you go to the next slide, please, Justin? Another thing that was discussed was the alternative sites. So like we discussed, the coverage gap really is centrally located around 2065 Placentia. That's our center. And what we have to work with is the commercial areas. We reviewed the existing sites, the monopalm and the monopine. There's a few issues with several of them. The first one is that co-locating on the existing fifty-five-foot monopine was not feasible because it lacks sufficient height for a third carrier. There's two existing carriers. We would need to locate beneath the third carrier, or the second carrier, excuse me. And that would not provide the coverage we need, and it would also put us out of compliance. There's a nearby telephone pole, and it would be too close. With the monopalm, it's similar. Using the nearby monopalm was also ruled out. Adding AT&amp;T's equipment would defeat the stealth design since the palm tree can't, if we were to add an additional ray, we can't, there's no way to stealth it. That would defeat the conditional use permit that was approved when the project was originally approved. Additionally, mounting lower on the structure would not achieve the needed signal coverage. So 2065 Placentia is an all preferred, it is a preferred zoning area, General Industrial. It is central to the coverage gap that AT&amp;T must fill, and all other owners in the vicinity decline to host a facility. So no alternative parcel was found. The project already meets and exceeds the five-foot minimum setback, or about twenty-seven feet, which is more than the existing facilities. And every reasonable alternative was examined. The next one, so residents noted that this would be the third tower in the area. A lot of people kind of have issues with clustering of wireless facilities, but it does make sense when you think about it. Usually what happens is, in certain corridors, there's clustering of facilities because those are the only corridors that allow for wireless. So the surrounding areas are zoned residential. They can only locate the facilities in an area with approved wireless. That would be this area. Placentia has several towers, and this is mostly because carriers are trying to improve service in low, low-signal pockets. We understand the concern, but federal law does prohibit cities from denying of facilities simply because the other towers exist nearby. Coverage maps show that a significant gap remains, and this site is necessary to fill it. And then regarding the cumulative RF exposure, I did see a couple of public comments regarding that. It is something that we consider in the EME report. It was run with the existing sites, and we did clear FCC standards, which account for the multiple transmitters. So it will be within safety limits. And then, the last public comment that I noticed was regarding to noise and maintenance. We conducted a noise study. This was provided to staff. The noise study complied with all of Costa Mesa's noise ordinances. So construction will only be done during weekdays. Maintenance visits are infrequent, and equipment is remotely monitored. And the conditions also require the facility to remain in good condition visually, but also operationally. And then the last thing I want to point out is that there is FirstNet coverage that will be made available on this project. So basically, FirstNet is AT&amp;T's nationwide high-speed wireless broadband network. Basically, what that means is, when there is some sort of emergency, they have, local, federal, and state agencies have a network that is dedicated just for them, a spectrum, which allows them to communicate with the public or in instances where they need to communicate with one another. This site will have FirstNet. And AT&amp;T's role in this is that they are the ones who are working with First Responder Network Authority, which is an official government agency, to design and build FirstNet. So in summary, this project closes a significant coverage gap. It complies with all federal, state, and local regulations. It uses a stealth design to minimize visual impact, and it has been reviewed and conditioned to ensure safety, aesthetics, and neighborhood compatibility, and was approved by the zoning administrator. I respectfully ask for your support, and I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? Vice Chair Zick?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. You know, it seems like you probably have studied all the locations around, you've done all your analysis, all your engineering, you've come to your conclusion. This is the spot for you. As you know from the public comment, it's not the spot for them, so I need to ask you a few questions. You indicate, when you considered other locations, that no other businesses in the area were interested in supporting you. Did I get that right?
Yes, that is correct. So when, when I go to find a suitable candidate for a wireless facility, I look to make sure that it's allowable in the city's zoning code, which is the first thing. And then I need to find a willing landlord.
And why were they not willing?
Most were unwilling to give up space, and the ones that were not, were willing to give up space, it did not work for AT&amp;T. It, either we had to locate on top of a rooftop, which did not allow the coverage we needed, or there was no space that we could remove for a wireless facility. So we couldn't reduce parking. You can't be located in the frontages off of Placentia. There's a twenty-foot setback, and most of the areas that you could locate would be in the landscaped areas, which is prohibited.
You indicate that you didn't consider any of the elementary schools, and the reason that you give primarily is that they're not located in the center of your coverage gap.
So there's, there's a couple of reasons why the elementary schools weren't chosen for this. The primary one is if you go and look at the, the third slide?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, sorry, one before. So if we look at where the elementary schools are, particularly the one on the east and the north, and then we compare them to, if you go back, or forward a slide, excuse me, sorry, Justin, if we compare them to where the existing sites are, they're too close to existing AT&amp;T sites to be useful for coverage. The other item is that elementary schools typically require and take a very, very long time to produce coverage or to get a facility online. And we don't like to, we have a certain time period when we need to get these sites online to provide coverage for the residents.
Okay, so the comment about preferring separation, that's really not the reason at all?
No, we have sites on elementary schools.
Right, under the rationale in the report.
Yeah, no, that's not, that's not entirely correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So on the gap in coverage map, and was that page three, Justin? Mr. Arios? The next slide? And let's go to the next one. And I think we have to go one more. Yeah. So this is a map that I think you indicated shows how you fill a gap. Shows how you fill the gap in coverage. It shows the after condition that you're modeling. But around that, I see basically the same condition of coverage gap, and those are largely residential areas. So does this mean that you might need four or five more of these monopines over some period of time?
That is a possibility. At some point, they may need additional facilities. It really depends on user data that AT&amp;T responds to. So they respond to customer complaints, and then dropped calls would be the two biggest ones. As technology changes in the future, there could be antennas that help reach those areas that don't require additional facilities. But at, at this point in time, looking at the map, they, they might require additional facilities in the, in the future. But there is no way to coverage the whole gap with one facility.
And without this tower, you're saying that you've had complaints from customers?
Yeah, AT&amp;T, so the way AT&amp;T... Yeah, AT&amp;T, so the way AT&amp;T kind of models where they're going to put sites is based on user data. So dropped calls and customer complaints.
And do you have that data for us tonight?
I don't personally have it, but I could give you the data from the RF engineer.
So that would be the rationale for?
Yes, yeah, so that, yes, correct.
You were talking about one of these towers that already has two services on it.
This is the monopine that's located on the same parcel.
The monopine, and your comment was that you couldn't go below the other two?
That is correct.
Okay. Why not above?
A tower extension would put us beyond the allowable height limit of the zone, I believe. And I don't, I don't know if that's, am I correct with that, Justin?
I mean, at a minimum, it would require an amendment to the previous approval for the additional height.
Right.
So it would most likely go through the same MCUP process.
But it's possible.
Potentially possible, yeah. Whether we would support the additional?
So we would probably, we would request to make it work about 20 feet of space because there's a minimum amount of separation required from the existing providers, and that separation is about 10 feet. So you would roughly need an additional 20 feet on top of the tower.
So you didn't seriously consider that? You just thought another monopine would be easier?
We thought a monopine would be more amenable for the residents than adding an additional 20 feet on top of a 55-foot tower.
Okay. Okay. Not an option that was discussed, though, with anyone.
Internally, it was discussed, yeah.
Okay. And then it's pretty clear from the pictures that the existing monopine, and that's, I think, a very generous way to describe it, is extremely, to my way of thinking?
Doesn't look good.
Ugly.
Yeah.
And it's on your property, and you're asking us to approve another one?
But I'm not asking you to approve that monopine. I agree, that monopine-
No, it's already on your property.
Yes.
And why aren't you fixing it up to make it look halfway decent while at the same time you're asking us to approve another one?
So AT&amp;T does not personally own the monopine or the property. That would be something that the tower owner has to work out with the city.
Are you representing the property owner?
No, I'm not. I'm representing AT&amp;T.
Elcon Group?
Yukon Group, yeah. We are a vendor for AT&amp;T.
Got it. Says you're representing the property owner, Public Storage Partners. So that's not the case?
I guess you could argue that I am also advocating for the property owner since they have-
So I'm asking about a monopine on your property, since you're advocating for the property owner.
So-
It looks horrible, and I'm wondering what you intend to do about it.
Personally, I would have to speak with Public Storage, or Public Storage would have to work that agreement with the tower owner, which is Verizon.
Are they here?
No, Verizon and the Public Storage are not here.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Okay. Commissioner Klepek, and then Commissioner Rehoss.
So this site, it's a long, narrow site. I understand there's the 20-foot setback from the front. Is there a reason why it's so far to the back?
Yeah, so Public Storage, you know, first and foremost, they are a storage facility. That's their business. And so the limited space with the drive aisles mean we could only locate in certain areas. They were unwilling to give up certain storage units, and so in the rear of the property is what we were able to conclude and agree on.
So do they not have to give up the storage units? Because it's sitting on top of the building, it looks like.
Yeah, we are taking those two storage units. Those storage units are what was available. They're also out of the way of the drive aisles. The existing monopine that's on the facility is not in a storage unit. There was no additional space. You can't fit in the drive aisles. There was no frontage space with the 20-foot setback. And in the rear, there are parking spaces, which we couldn't take. And there's also a five-foot setback in the rear.
Okay. Possibly, this would be a question for staff, then. Was that, was the possibility of moving it up discussed with Public Storage? If they're the ones getting paid for it?
No, that was not discussed with the applicant, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rehoss?
Yeah, I want to come back to that. I just want one simple piece because the other part's already been answered. But, you know, I'm still stuck on this part. AT&amp;T typically does not locate facilities on elementary schools for separation. And you indicated, is that strictly because it's a delayed process to install there?
Typically because it is a delayed, you have to go through a process called DSA, and DSA takes an extensive period of time. It could take three to five years minimum.
So that's the primary reason?
It's the primary, it's the primary reason.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Give you a few minutes if you want to rebut anything from public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open the public comments. If you'd like to speak on this item, please come to either podium. And if you're joining us by Zoom, use the raise hand option, or if you're on phone, star nine. Let's start with Chambers. Go ahead.
Thank you everyone so much for doing this. I imagine this is often a difficult and thankless job, so I want to start by saying thank you. Y'all asked great questions. I am very optimistic just hearing how interested and concerned you are. I have a lot of concerns of my own, especially with even just trusting our AT&amp;T rep. When they call the peer-reviewed literature dubious, I don't know if they know what peer review means, but it's not. And when they tell us to trust their expert, David Widkowski, I Googled him. He's a consultant for OCU Solutions, who is paid by telecom companies to tell you what they want you to hear. So no, that is not a better resource. And this kind of like bending of the truth is consistent with this planning application in the first place. We can see no comparative propagation analysis for different onsite locations published to the public until right now in these PowerPoints. This original application was lazy at best and did not meet the necessary burdens to pass per the criteria in Costa Mesa Municipal Code, meaning that its denial is not an effective prohibition on cell towers. It's a denial of a lazy and insufficient application full of inconsistencies and borderline lies, as we saw even just some in person in this room right now. When we are kind of looking at what happens next, the Costa Mesa Municipal Code in two different sections, one being 13144C and also 1329F, allows for conditions to be placed upon these permit applications, meaning things like put it farther from the residential property line. Again, it's not an unreasonable request, and the kind of issue here isn't that it makes a prohibition on cell towers, it's that AT&amp;T has to pay more money for a more desirable piece of land. And again, that is not an effective prohibition to expect them to pay a reasonable price to not disturb the community instead of going with the cheapest, laziest solution and only offering you the alternative of elementary schools to imply that anyone opposed is a NIMBY that wants you to put it in a school instead of someone who wants you to put it a reasonable distance from homes in a different industrial or commercial location. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in chambers wish to speak?
Did you get the buzzers out of email?
Hold on a moment. Ma'am, go ahead.
Okay.
Good evening.
No, she's, hold on, sir.
Good evening. I just came by to listen to what the presenter had to say about the tower. And right off the top of my head, I just feel like he didn't present that gap analysis because I wanted to look at numbers, like what is the real service that he needs? What's the gap that's needed? And also, is there really an increase? Because I see a lot of places that are like for rent and a lot of closed businesses, so that it seems like we should need more coverage. And then the other thing I wanted to cover was the health issue. Normally, everybody just looks at the electromagnetic waves, but there's other health things. I believe that one of the goals for Costa Mesa is that you want a healthy community. Well, a healthy community is not made by having people sit and look through the internet the whole day. So, you know, we need to look at the fact that doing all this possibly unnecessary internet coverage is not needed, and we need better, healthy alternatives to getting people out of the house instead of keeping them in the house. Yeah, there was a whole bunch of other questions that were covered by Mr. Sitch, I believe, Sitch? But I did wanted to, you know, I didn't see the gap, the analysis gap that was like the big point, that that's what they needed that. And what would happen if the community around there did a boycott of AT&amp;T? And then AT&amp;T would no longer need that tower, right? And of course, the aesthetics, it's terrible. You know, they should have gone and fixed that first before coming over here and saying ours is going to be better. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else in chambers that wishes to speak? All right. All right, go ahead. We'll accommodate you, sir, once we get your... Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Ashley Babazada, and I'm a resident of Federal Avenue, where I've lived for four years now with my husband and my two young children. The wireless facility being considered would be built directly behind our home, where there is already multiple wireless towers. I'm here to voice my strong opposition to the proposed wireless tower directly behind our home. First, credible scientific research has raised serious concerns about long-term health impacts of radio frequency radiation. A 2025 WHO-funded review along with major animal studies by the U.S. National Toxicology Program and Italy's Remizi Institute found very clear evidence of increased risk for brain and heart tumors. The science is evolving, but the risk is real enough to warrant caution, especially in densely populated neighborhoods with children. Second, placing a wireless tower in a residential area like ours violates the precautionary principle, a public health standard that says we shouldn't wait for absolute proof of harm before taking action to protect people. We're not saying to ban all wireless infrastructure. We're saying don't put it 50 feet from someone's home. Third, this tower would have direct negative impact on our property values. Studies have shown that homes near wireless towers can lose 10% to 20% of their value. It's not theoretical, it's our financial security being diminished for the convenience of a corporation. Fourth, a zoning and planning perspective, this proposal seems out of step with both local guidelines and common sense. There are other less intrusive locations that should be considered, such as commercial or more industrial zones. Our neighborhood should not be treated as the path of least resistance. Finally, I'd like to point out that neither wireless companies nor regulators are required to prove long-term safety before placing these kind of infrastructures in place. That means that the burden of risk is shifted entirely onto us, the residents, without our consent. Beyond all of the facts, my husband and I have noticed some personal changes in our sleeping patterns once we moved into the home, which have already a wireless tower directly behind. We get extremely warm at night despite our air being on, and my husband has a constant ringing noise in his ear. An additional tower is going to amplify that, and the proximity to the homes makes it extremely worse. I do urge the board to reject or reconsider this proposal. We all understand the need for connectivity, right? We don't want to say, hey, we don't want internet. But really, should it come at the cost of our health, our homes, and our peace of mind? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us. So my name is Sinine Miller, and I'm the resident right behind the 55-foot monopine that we have existing today. I live right behind. My home is about 15 feet away from that monopine. So at the end of my three minutes, I want you to listen what I hear every day, day in, day out, at night. I cannot open my windows. I want you to experience this with me today, if you don't mind. So the tower was built in 2008 behind my home, and the same process happened. We receive a card. It says tower to be built on Placentia. I tossed it away. I live on Federal. I didn't understand the problem, but this time around, I caught it. I would like to point out that it was sent to us on the Fourth of July, and we had 10 days to respond. My whole neighborhood was away. I had to track people in Europe. I had to track people to Montana to try to have 100 people sign the petition. We had it. 100 people directly around this tower signed my petition. They don't want it there. The first thing is anger. Why are we the dumpster of Costa Mesa? Why, we already have two. There's my tower. There is another house with another tower. There's only five homes in between the two, and they want to place a third tower in that five-house span. This is out of control. The second question of the residents was, when does it stop? Are we going to have a whole forest of monopine behind our homes? I mean, when is enough enough? So I want you to listen what I hear every day. I invite all of you to come to my house to listen to this.
Every day, every hour of every day.
This is my backyard fence. This is what I hear.
This is where she entertains guests. She goes for peace and serenity.
Imagine a breakfast in Sunday morning when you want to hear the birds, and that's what you get. So they want to make it pretty. They want to disguise them. The reality, this is it. So again, I'm inviting all of you to come and see for yourself. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
All right, I'll start my time. Thank you for your service. We've already taken one for the team. We have already hideous, industrial, poorly maintained cell tower in our backyards. As my original objection explained, the workers have been obnoxiously crass and inappropriate, leering into our unbelievably private backyards. We have 12-foot fences around the backs of our properties, and still, as they peer over our fences, the workers have commented on my nieces in their bathing suits. It terrified them. They had to hide inside the house. Another time, the police were called because the workers were playing unbelievably filthy and obnoxious rap music. I think they were having a Friday afternoon, hang out in the tower and enjoy the end of the work week. It was heard two streets over. I know that because my neighbors on National pounded on my door, thinking I was having a party in my backyard, and it was the workers in the cell tower above our heads. And this is the ultimate bait and switch. It's not as though we bought houses under a flight plan and then came to you to complain about the noise of the airplanes. We bought houses in very residential, very private areas. We love and know our neighbors. The public storage, although they are terrible neighbors, they're at least predictable, and they close at 6 o'clock, 5 o'clock on the weekends. That's what we signed up for. It's the reason we poured so much money into our homes. And the application is inaccurate at best and disingenuous and duplicitous, in fact. Referring them euphemistically as monopines and adding the word stealth repeatedly in their proposal is just an outright lie. The renderings that you were offered, this is what you were shown as the existing cell tower that they are going to match. It's in the same information that I was given. This is what it looks like. And thank you to those of you that drove by my house, which is also in their proposal, and looked at it for yourself. That was two minutes. I get through, oh, thank you. And it takes, every picture you take in the backyard while you are in the pool or by the fire pit has a giant industrial cell tower in the background. And when they say that it is a light industrial area, that's really not true. All of this is residential. All of Brickyard is residential. The 14 homes that are there, that's not an industrial complex to the north. And they're even a little confused about where they're putting it. In all of the renderings, we were said it was in this building. What they showed us up there today is in this building. The current cell tower is in this building. And I loved your questions about where is the guarantee that you'll maintain yours when the one that is up there hasn't been maintained up until now? And it says that the, they chose the easiest location. They didn't choose the best location. It's just lazy to not look for it.
All right, thank you.
My name is John, and I'm a 45-year resident-
Costa Mesa, 25 years on Federal Avenue at 2070. I live next door to Chris. I live next door to Chris and Celine. I'm a FirstNet customer. I'm an AT&amp;T customer. And yes, my service is not that great. But that's okay. I'll walk outside, I'll make a phone call. You know, it doesn't bother me. What bothers me is having another cell tower, and like Chris said, somebody staring down at my wife and I and my two young children when we're sitting in the spa, and like he said, playing loud music, you know, screaming and yelling and so forth. And he says it's not so often that they are up there doing construction or doing work on it. It seems like it's all the time. And they're doing it, putting up wires. They're not putting up more pine needles or more pine trees because it looks like crud, it looks like a Charlie Brown tree. It's ridiculous. We already have one. We have one right there. We paid our penance. Put that tower out on Placentia Avenue, where it is industrial, okay? Not next to our homes. We have a beautiful neighborhood. We bought here because we backed up to public storage. We wouldn't have neighbors and so forth. And then we have beautiful trees. And public storage has been okay, except for the siren that goes off all the time, which we've complained about multiple times to the police department, and nothing ever happens. So I'm assuming that's the same thing that's going to happen when another tower, this proposed tower is going to be built, is we're going to complain about that, and we're going to get nothing. So, please, please. We live there, our children live there, our neighbors live there. We don't want this tower. I'm an emergency room nurse, my wife's an emergency room nurse. I don't know the medical issues that can come with this, but there's got to be something. It concerns me. And like, again, we paid our penance, one's enough. Put it someplace else, pony up the money, put it on the street. Not in our backyards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Committee. My name is Jocelyn, and I appreciate you giving me the time to speak to all of you tonight. I'm here on behalf of my neighborhood to express our concern about the proposed cellphone tower going into our neighborhood directly right next to our homes. As you could hear earlier, it can be heard right from our backyard. While we understand the importance of connectivity, the location of this tower raises serious issues that will directly affect the character and livability of our community. First, there is the noise impact. Towers like this one have a constant low-level hum, as you could hear from the video, from the equipment, and at times louder maintenance work. This may not sound significant in a planning document, but when place just steps away from someone's backyard and bedroom, it becomes a daily disruption and impedes on a peaceful living environment. Second, the city has made a very large push to encourage new housing and increase residential zoning. This tower sits right in the middle of that effort. If we want families to move here, buy homes, and invest in our community, we cannot simultaneously surround them with infrastructure that belongs in commercial or industrial zones. It sends a conflicting message. On one hand, we want to attract new residents. On the other, we are willing to compromise your quality of life and our right to quiet enjoyment of our property. Third, aesthetics matter. A cell tower of this scale is physically jarring, visually jarring. Especially when two other ones are going to be within 300 feet of each other. We have three within view of my street alone. They will dominate the landscape and become the defining feature of the neighborhood, overshadowing our homes. This will directly affect the home values. And most importantly, this is not just one person's opinion. Over 100 people signed that signature. Over 100 residents and constituents have signed a petition opposing this tower. That level of concern shows how deeply this project will affect the community, and it deserves to be taken seriously. In short, this tower may meet a technical need, but the placement is wrong. It belongs in a location that supports infrastructure, not one that conflicts with the residential growth and community values. I urge the committee to reconsider this site and work with providers to find an alternative option that supports connectivity without sacrificing the character of our neighborhoods. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
You're hearing from a lot of us tonight, thanks for your patience. So, visual pollution is one thing, right? If this is a pine, it needs a tree surgeon. We've said it, we've seen it, you've seen the pictures for it. But tonight, we also heard from our city team that the time to actually deal with fluffing it up is when a permit change, some type of adjustment, is requested by the owner of the tower. How often does that happen? That is not a maintenance plan. AT&amp;T, I believe, they said, the city will enforce upkeep. Based on results, said with respect, that doesn't seem to be the case. We also know that the city has been increasing the residential footprint in our area for some time, right? And it's really looking great, it's nice to have those neighbors. This does not match with that plan of growth, for residential growth in our area, which can sustain it, which does need it. I have to go by notes. Noise pollution, you heard from our neighbor. You can hear it. And AT&amp;T says, where is it? They said basically it's within guidelines. Guidelines for residential, for commercial. And if those guidelines mean you're hearing that buzz, it's not okay. I thought it was really interesting that the reason we're not looking at elementary school is because it's going to take too long. And the reason we're not going further closer to Placentia with the storage unit is because it just doesn't play out. Well, that just means it's more expensive, if you ask me. I really appreciate your time. Oh, by the way, 92 people is a lot of people to sign a petition about something like this. It takes a lot to get people to put their pen to paper and sign their name. 92 people in a tiny little area have said, please reconsider. So, make that 93. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else in chambers who wishes to speak?
Good evening, my name is Jason Della O. I emailed the commission, but apparently it was not received. She printed out pictures and handed them to you. I'll read my email real quick, because I think it's descriptive. My wife and I are homeowners and residents at 2083 Continental Avenue. I also own a business in Costa Mesa. We received the notice for this. I've attached a photo in the view from our yard this morning, September 8. As you can see, the wireless tower is disguised as a tree, as a complete ISO, towers over the landscapes, and doesn't integrate into the size, scope, and character of the neighborhood foliage. I feel it's too concentrated in one area. Of course, it's west side, we prefer it to basically transfer throughout the city to, so it's not impacted at all in one small community. Also attached to the email I sent and to the photo, there's an abandoned cellphone tower in that photo. As a course of my business, I lease property from the state of California. That cellphone tower is on this property I lease from the state of California. That cellphone tower post has been abandoned. It's been three or four years now. And what happened was, when it first... And I've worked for the company for 30 years, and now I own it. But initially, what happened was, they started putting the cellphone tower up. It looked beautiful, it was clean, it was nice. They maintained it, the lights were, bulbs were changed. As time went on, neglected more and more, and like Mr. McDonald said, the new one's going to be nice and clean, but T-Mobile and the others, as he mentioned, they allow them to degenerate, and they become even worse of an ISO. What happened to this one is, in that photo, they merged with another company. Well, these leases are long-term leases that these cellphone towers have. And what do they do? They just abandon the poles when they're no longer needed. A lot of these contracts, including this one I sent a picture of there, they're required to remove the cellphone equipment, which is at the top of the tower. They're not required in the agreement to remove the pole. So what do they do? They keep making the lease payments to the property owner, but they allow that pole to just stay there. I've looked at that pole for four years, empty, not being used. And I fear that this type of thing can happen to any one of these poles that's adjacent here. You also, I also encourage you to look at the leases for each of these cellphone towers, because...
You're... All right, thank you, sir, your time's up. All right, is there anybody else in chambers, last chance? Okay, Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or phone?
Cynthia McDonald, you may provide your public comment.
Good evening again, commissioners. A lot of good comments here tonight. It goes to show how intelligent our community really is. So, we are rezoning to build denser, taller buildings, including this property is on the Measure K map. But how long before there's another gap in service, and another taller tower is needed, and another tower gets abandoned, and starts looking like, you know, heck? Who wants to live next to that? How are we going to draw new residents to this area if they're looking out the back of their property and seeing a rusty old tower? What's the cumulative impact on the community? How many of these can go on a property? And what stops AT&amp;T from putting, you know, another four or five of these along Placentia? And when do they become detrimental? Seven, 10? You know, Costa Mesa is supposed to be a tree-city USA. I don't think those plastic monopines and monopalms could get credit with the Arbor Day Foundation. You cannot put enough lipstick on these pigs. They are ugly. At a bare minimum, you need to include a planting of a real tree as a condition of approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Huffman, you may provide your public comment.
Good evening. What if there are six companies, or 10 companies, so 12 cellphone companies? Do they all have a right to provide coverage for the area? You know, this is getting ridiculous. All the companies need to work together to share poles and facilities. And the city needs to step up, regulate the industry by planning for suitable locations. It's time to stand up for the residents, not the big companies. If AT&amp;T's competitors have an advantage, it's just too bad. Try hard, get over it, find a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew's iPhone, you may provide your public comment.
Thank you very much, this is Andrew Barnes. I also live in Freedom Homes tract, and I can attest to the blight, the visual blight of this existing infrastructure. Listening to public comments, I've been struck that maybe AT&amp;T hasn't done their due diligence, hasn't completed an analysis of appropriate or plausible locations. In light of the fact that there is an existing tower that may be abandoned, it seems to me that they should be able to repurpose that and work out a sublease agreement with the existing leasing to that pole. I thought that the public comments were very thoughtful and passionate. And I would ask that the commission at least do a bit more work, or have the applicant do a little bit more work to assure public safety and continuity of our residential neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's no one else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. McDonald, if you'd like to come back up for a minute or two to respond, the floor is yours.
So, to address some of the public comments in no particular order, the first one that I heard several times was noise. This will be an indoor facility. The facility in question that they are speaking about, it's outdoors and it's right on the property line. It's probably right outside the 5-foot setback. This one's set back 27 feet, significantly more. It's inside the storage units, they won't be able to hear any noise. The second biggest one is aesthetics. We can, I don't know if staff would be interested in adding a condition requiring approval of potentially a 3D model from the tower company that shows exactly what the tower will look like, rather than photo simulations. That would help. But the new facilities, they do look better, they do hold up better over time. The one off of Newport Boulevard, to reiterate, has been there for about five to seven years. It looks as good as when it was installed. Excuse me, Irvine Boulevard, overlooking Back Bay. It's a faux yuk, and the pines will hold up well, the new ones as well. The third comment that I heard referred to a lot is that I should locate it in another area, an area that's suited for it. This is an area that's suited for it. It's an industrial area. The areas to the south and to the west are industrial areas. This is a needed piece of infrastructure for the city. It allows people in this area to have the same services that other AT&amp;T customers have in other parts of the city. You've seen where the other facilities exist surrounding this one. It's not egregious to ask that the people who live in this area, who do have AT&amp;T service, have the same service as their counterparts. If the, I guess, in the same vein as aesthetics, there seems to be a large concern with the proximity to the residential and the back. This was mainly be positioned it due to avoid the frontage, which is, I think it's about a 20 or 30-foot setback from the front. But if staff is amenable to it, we can look into locating the facility closer towards the front of the property, if it's on the same parcel, which would minimize the view from the residences behind. I'm sympathetic to that, I understand there's three facilities there. The two, they don't look particularly good. I want to work with the residences in the city so that we can get a facility to address the coverage, but also have one that is amenable to the people who live next to it. And the health and safety ones, again, it falls within FCC guidelines. It's not something the city can deny, it is safe. We have done compliance with the other facilities. And I think those were the main ones I wanted to respond to.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any more questions of staff? Vice Chair Zick.
I did. Justin, is there, Mr. Arios, is there a limit to how many towers can be? Is there any separation requirement that the city has in its zoning code? Again, if we've got T-Mobile there, this is AT&amp;T, if, you know, if we get five more cell companies that want to put towers there, is that up to them and the property owner? Or do we have any limit at all?
Correct, I'm confirming, but there is no maximum number of communication antennas from the city's code.
In your presentation, could you turn to the slide that had the aerial photo? Probably one of the early pages. Back. Oh, I guess that's page two, so go forward. That one. So, what is the height of the... No, that was the slide I was interested in. Yes. That one. What is the height of the rooftop decks at the Brickyard? Approximately?
I would have to look into to confirm, but I believe, and this is just based off the top of my head, of the maximum height for the urban plan, I believe it's 45 feet. But I would have to confirm and double-check on what specifically this was approved for.
I was going to guess about that. I heard a comment, and I don't know if you have to respond to it, or if we need the applicant to respond to it, something about, as part of the FCC, the emission analysis and all of that, that there is no safety problem at the ground level. I'm not sure who said that, was that a comment you made?
I believe that was made by the applicant, but it was in reference to, I think, an item that was mentioned in the EME report for the project.
Right, and so I'm wondering now, with the rooftop decks of the Brickyard being at 40 or 45 feet and this monopine being 55 feet, if that was something looked at as part of the analysis?
Yeah, yeah, I would take into the existing context and existing structures that are in the area for their propagation coverage.
So, no safety issue with them being essentially at the same elevation as the equipment on the tower?
Correct.
Were they included in the 500-foot radius notification? The Brickyard occupants, property owners, were they included in the 500-foot notification?
Yeah, so they would have, all property owners and occupants within that 500-foot radius would have gone.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Martinez.
All right, thank you. I want to just go through some of the public comments and ask questions about them. So, first, I wanted to ask about workers and whoever might be at this tower. Do you have a condition approval or city ordinance that specifies?
Yeah, so assuming that it's under an issued city building permit, they would be subject to the noise standards that is referenced. There are some exceptions to the noise standards, but it's only during certain hours and on certain days.
Okay. The noise that we heard and was mentioned, that also covered under municipal code or under our conditions?
Yeah, provided, I mean, so provided it would, I mean, it would just, any noise could fall under the city's noise ordinance, whether it meets the threshold to trigger a violation is another discussion.
Okay. We heard a few comments about putting it either someplace else, not on this property, or maybe perhaps even further away on this property, or would be required to put it in, let's say, the front setback?
Yes, I think from the staff's perspective, we wouldn't want it to be in any of those required setbacks, but provided it's outside of those setbacks and is the desire of the commission, we would be amenable to those alternatives.
Okay. What condition do we have regarding maintaining the aesthetics of the proposal?
Yes, let me find the specific ones. So, we do have Condition Eight. That talks about it being painted to match the existing. And then on Number Nine, we do talk about the appearance and the branching of the proposed tree. Eleven does talk about being well-maintained and kept in good conditions at all times. I think that was probably the one specifically you were looking for.
Okay. Now, I want to talk about MCUP finding Number Five. The applicant's map showing what the results would be of installing this tower, that assumes 55-foot tower exactly in the proposal. Do we have any information for if it was a slightly different proposal? If it was 50 feet, 54 feet?
Not that was submitted to the city. I'm not sure if the applicant did other analyses for different heights of a facility, but nothing that was submitted to the city.
Am I able to ask the applicant that question?
Yeah, we have a closed public hearing, so. Would you like to come back up to respond to that?
Could you ask the question one more time?
Do you have any analysis about the effectiveness of the proposal at a slightly lower height?
So, AT&amp;T RF engineers, they run the analysis and they run them at various heights. The heights that we looked at were locating under the existing towers. I can't speak to specific heights, but if you request them, I could provide those coverage maps.
Okay. Because the finding is the deviation from applicable development standards represents the minimum adjustment necessary to prevent unreasonable limitations on the reception or transmission of signals. And right now, we are looking at the height of this tower. So, without having any other data about the strength at a different height, how can I make this finding?
Reducing the facility by any amount of height reduces the coverage provided. So, when you are asking how much coverage is being reduced, I need a specific number. So, if you're requesting how much coverage is reduced by one foot, how much coverage is reduced by five feet, how much coverage is reduced by 10 feet, there will be homes, there will be areas that will have reduced, limited, or no coverage, the purple-red that I spoke about. But off the top of my hand, I don't know specifically how many homes for each foot or each specific elevation drop for the arrays.
And then the question would be, if any, if any home is not then included, would that be an unreasonable limitation? Because that is the language that is in our finding.
I think that it would depend on quantity and how much of the gap is extended or how much of the gap is not covered by the reduction in height.
Okay, thank you. And for staff. I decided to take a look at our housing element. Measure K was mentioned. This is on Placentia's Measure K site. It's also a housing element site. It's Number 69 in our site inventory. It's planned, well, you know, in the housing element. It has 73 units, a few very low income, a few low income. Did we analyze how approving this proposal would affect our housing element numbers?
No, we did not.
Okay. So, one of the general plan consistency criteria is, I mean, it's just consistently with the general plan. And do we know if this would then break consistency with our housing element? Because we're putting something here that might prohibit housing in the future or might dissuade housing in the future even?
Amber Gregg with the Planning Division will chime in here a little bit on this one, too. So, the existing zoning is what the underlying zone is based on. We can't base it on future, and they applied at the time where that is the existing zoning within our zoning code, and they have every right to do that. Should this be redeveloped in the future, the city can look at ways of implementing either the tower into the design potentially or having them relocate the facility at that time, too. So, those would be options that would be analyzed in the future.
And although the property is within that designation in the housing element, it would still be up to the property owner on how they would like the property to be developed. So, it's not a guarantee that it would be converted to residential housing.
It's not a guarantee, but it is in our housing element at least. Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Dixon.
So, if we did want, if they were considering moving it to a separate area on the lot, how does this affect the application if we were wanting to ask for more data? If we wanted to get this information the applicant is offering to provide? Would that be the next available meeting? Would that be a vote to continue? Would that be a deny without prejudice? What would, what would the mechanism be if we were to consider these alternatives?
We would look to the next available meeting that can accommodate the applicant's, you know, research and their submittal of whatever is requested. It's recommended to continue it to a date certain so that we don't have to renotice.
All right, and then are there any, are you familiar with any towers in the city that are higher than 55 feet anywhere?
I want to say we potentially have some 60-foot poles, towers, but I'd have to probably do a little research to see, but I'd want to say most are around 50 to 60.
Okay, and are you familiar with the abandoned tower Mr. Delo was referring to?
I am not. I'm not familiar with where that one is.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Okay, Commissioners, any more questions? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Vice Chair, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dixon.
I move that we continue this to a date uncertain to allow for the applicant to revise the location on the lot potentially and to provide additional data regarding the coverage gaps at different heights of the tower. That's my motion.
Okay. Second, Vice Chair Zick, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. If I lived on federal, I would be here, I wouldn't be sitting calmly in the audience. I'd have pitchforks and, and this has nothing to do with AT&amp;T's application, by the way. Their application looks lovely as far as from a monopine perspective. What is there? And if that noise is true, I would encourage every one of you to call Code Enforcement. I would encourage every one of you to go on the 311 app, take a picture of it, submit it. It's not acceptable. And so, I would like to see the conditions of approval for those and find out what is going on with that noise and what is going on with the lack of maintenance. As far as the AT&amp;T application, I have seen some really good-looking monopines. We do need to have cellphone towers, whether or not that close to the property line is the most beneficial spot or if perhaps they can come up with something else that would help assuage the residents' concerns. You know, I live very close to there. I live on Congress, and I have zero reception from AT&amp;T. I've had to have three different wireless carriers. T-Mobile was kind enough to let me out of their thing completely because I had no coverage. There is a significant problem with Wi-Fi over there. So, I'd like to solve that problem, and I think if we have an applicant that is understanding, and I don't like to hear the allegations about maybe not the best above-the-board dealings, I hope that that can be worked out. It's not something we necessarily take into consideration, but we do need the tower. We are limited industrial areas over there where we can put it, so maybe a better spot on that particular parcel is an option that'll be acceptable to everyone. I do like the fact that it's quiet. I do like the fact that it's enclosed. When, we've had previous wireless applications on the east side that were just awful. It's just this giant ugly thing right next to a house with a giant box on the street, and we were told at that time there's nothing we could do about it except for aesthetics. This, unfortunately for AT&amp;T, the existing towers look like hell, and apparently there's issues with those. So, I would hope that we could come up with some more data as far as the coverage to demonstrate the need and alternative locations you looked at. Again, not just schools, if there's anything else, if we have a little more detail on that, but we do need this over there in this area. I do like the aesthetics. It's the best monopine I've seen so far, which monopines are not pines, but still. And I am familiar with the one you were talking about over on the east side that does look pretty nice. So, if we can find a way to do this, that's not going to have it leering over the back wall, looking like some scarecrow that's making a lot of noise, I think that'd be great. So, that's my motion.
Okay, Vice Chair Zick.
First of all, a question maybe for the city attorney. Could you distinguish between a date certain and a date uncertain? I believe the motion included a date uncertain. Could you clarify?
Correct. So, if it's continued to a date uncertain, typically the applicant would need to let us know when they're ready to come back. But the distinction for staff is if it's continued to date uncertain, then the applicant, the application or the hearing has to be completely renoticed. Continued to date certain, it does not have to be renoticed because the hearing is open and it's just being continued to that date certain.
So, let me ask you a question then of the applicant. How much time do you think you would need to go back and be more responsive to the things you've heard tonight? Two weeks, a month? A month. So, could staff commit to a meeting in a month? And that be a date certain?
Well, what we typically would do was take into account the timeframe for the submittal and then the timeframe for our review and reproducing an additional report. So, given that month timeframe and then our time to review and to report, staff would recommend a continuing to the December 8th hearing.
Okay, and that would be a date certain. Would that be okay with the maker of the motion?
That would be okay with the maker of the motion, is that work for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, so, my second stands, and my comments about, may I make comments about?
Sure.
Okay. You know, I'm a strong believer that, you know, a man's home is his castle, and I understand the old-fashioned gender use in that. But that's a place where people go to get away from everything else, and it's not a place that they should hate to go or dread going because of what's happening around them. I'm grateful for your concession willingness to move the location of the tower on that property. And I'm expecting, hoping that that's what we're going to see in December. I would also recommend as part of the work that you do that you give contact information to some of the people that are here tonight and actually set up, when you get closer, set up a neighborhood meeting so they can see the details of what you're planning. Hopefully, they would see that as a real progress so that when we're here in December, they can be home with their family, knowing that what's in front of us is something that they can live with. The other request that I have, and I'm looking at you as the property owner, and I recognize that you're kind of distancing yourself from them, that existing tower is a blight, and I expect that as part of the plan that you present in December, you have some meaningful intentions of remedying that. Of course, if there's a noise problem, I would expect that would be part of it, too. You know, these people live in their homes. I couldn't get into public storage. There was a little woman came up on a TV screen when I went into the office. I said, "Can you open up the front gate at least so I can go back there?" "No, I'm not there." That's an absentee landlord. They really don't. They don't care as much, let me say it that way, about what goes on there and its impact to neighbors as people that are in their homes every night. And I give great deference to these homeowners. And again, thank you for taking this charge to go back and come up with a plan that is more satisfactory to them. Appreciate you doing that.
Okay, Commissioners, any more comments? Commissioner Klepek first, then Andrade.
Yeah, I just wanted to note some of the points. I also really appreciate the willingness to look at a different location, possibly further up on the site. I think the property value argument, there's two sides of that coin because a lot of people would go into a house and see no cell service, no internet, and leave. So, there's, there's two sides to that. It does back up to industrial. However, I'm not personally satisfied with the argument that the storage facility doesn't want to lose units because that's what they're getting compensated for and the people that live behind are not. So, I appreciate you considering a little further up. Thanks.
All right, Commissioner Andrade.
Yeah, similarly, supporting the comments made about improving the existing tower that you have, certainly adhering to the noise limits and ensuring that staff that is there to repair or support are within those expectations of the community. And also, it looks like within the coverage map or the gap map that you're looking at, keeping it within that industrial area closer to Placentia would meet the needs that you have. Again, being creative, as it was shared with the property owner, would be ideal. And please, stay away from, I mean, it sounds like elementary schools are not going to meet your need, but I would recommend to just not consider them because we don't need added stressors for youth to learn successfully in these west-side schools. That's all.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, one last thing, and I don't know if this is for staff, the 60-foot tower. Because if there's opportunity to extend the existing one to this, a 60, to be a 60-foot, that would also be an alternative solution.
All right, if there are no more questions, let's call for the question.
That motion carries seven, zero.
That motion carries seven, zero.
All right. Thank you very much for those who showed up. I appreciate the comments from the applicant as well, so we'll see you back here in December. We have no old business. We have one new business item tonight. Anna, will you please read the title for new business item number one?
New business item number one, study session regarding general plan safety element technical update. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item.
Okay. Yes, you can. All right. Ms. Gregg, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Good evening, planning commissioners. Amber Gregg, project planner for this item. Tonight, I'm before you to talk about a safety element and technical updates related to that. But first, the question is, what actually is a safety element? Well, a safety element is one of seven mandatory elements of the general plan, or eight if you include the new environmental justice element that we'll be taking on soon. And what it does is it analyzes and reviews different impacts to our community, and it protects from natural and human-made hazards. It's also required to have by the California government code, and then the last time that Costa Mesa updated our safety element was in 2015. So why do we update the safety element? Well, first and foremost, state law requires it, and it requires us to update it along with the latest data information. In addition to that, our housing element also requires us to update our safety element as part of this cycle as well. In 2023, the city actually adopted our local hazard mitigation plan, and that's really an in-depth analysis on various impacts and data needed, and it takes a real deep dive on potential hazards in our community. And with the adoption of that, we now need to integrate that information for consistency purposes into our safety element. In addition to that, we've also had a couple of updates to several different maps, one of which is the CAL FIRE map. So those were released in March of this year. And for the first time, Costa Mesa does have a very high fire hazard severity zone, and so the safety element needs to be updated to reflect that as well. In addition, FEMA has issued new flood maps. Those were done in 2022, and just to make sure that we're still in compliance with that. And then it also ensures consistency with safety and eligibility with fundings, why we do aren't those updates. So what are we endeavoring on this safety element update? Well, first off, it's not a complete overhaul of the safety element. Again, I noted that the last time we adopted it was in 2015, and although that sounds like a long time ago, it really isn't when you're looking at geological changes and larger over time changes. But it is an impact for things like we just mentioned with the fire map updates as well as flood planes. We just want to make sure that those are up to date. We also want to make sure that we have the information from the local hazard mitigation plan in there, update any necessary maps or technical data that's been done. And really, the purpose of it is just for technical accuracy and compliance with state law. Since we have updated the safety element in 2015, there are legislative updates that have gone into effect since then, and we want to be compliant with those as well. So there are key elements to a safety element, and there's a couple that we have looked at that do need to be updated or anticipating will be updated with this effort. But first, I want to point out that the entire element is actually being reviewed by all city departments, just to make sure that it's technically accurate and we have the best available information in there. In addition, the ones that are going to have modifications are wildfire hazards, again, because of the CAL FIRE maps, flood hazards. We're going to confirm our consistency with seismic and geological hazards with the state data information that we have available to us. And then as well as hazardous materials and climate adaptation. So with the local hazard mitigation plan, we did have to look at climate adaptation as part of legislative requirements, and so those will be folded into the safety element as well for consistency purposes. So again, what are the benefits of the update? Well, the analysis will help better protect public health and safety and make sure that we're prepared for, for seen hazards that may befall us. It also provides a look at current hazard data for land use decisions. So if we do have an area that has higher flooding potential, we would want to know that, just like the fire areas as well, to make sure that we account for those. It also supports disaster preparedness and our emergency response, which is so important. And then it makes sure that we stay eligible for state and federal hazard mitigation funds, which aligns with FEMA as well. So when this comes before you in the future, and right now, the purpose of this is really just to let you know that we have started on this endeavor, and we are working our way through the safety element, and we just want to make you aware of that. This is a handy-dandy little chart to show you, you know, what the 2015 housing out, or house, sorry, safety element has versus what you can anticipate with the draft one. So again, the first one really is the legislative requirements that have gone to effect. There's, there's really four main one, five if you look at the evacuation route. These were all looked at as part of our local hazard mitigation plan. So it's not new to us as a city, but it's just adding that information into the safety element. We will also update the baseline conditions. Again, those were looked at with the local hazard mitigation plan, and then we're going to modify to take into account the new maps from fire as well, to make sure we have the most accurate information. And then emergency preparedness. The local hazard mitigation plan already did plan for this, so again, it's just carrying it over to the safety element and then also have stronger integration with our regional assets and partners in the area to make sure that we have support there. And then the goals and objectives, the goals and objectives that are currently in the safety element will remain as is. What will change is adding the climate adaptation resilience measures into the safety element. So those will be policies that are added. But again, they're the policies that already exist in the local hazard mitigation plan that's been adopted. And then the overall direction, in 2015, our safety element was built on traditional hazard-based planning, whereas the new one will be looking more at resilience to hazards that may be coming our way. So what's next? So right now, staff is still compiling information and doing updates, and will complete that review through the rest of the year. And then we're hoping to come back to you in early next year for your review and recommendation, followed by going to city council in spring. Throughout this whole time, we will also be looking at California Environmental Quality Act consistency prior to coming before you. So that completes staff's presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Gregg, commissioners, any questions? Vice Chair Zick.
You're just looking for feedback, Ms. Gregg, so thank you for the presentation. That matrix on page seven I find very useful when this does come back to us. I would love to see that kind of a, however this eventually gets updated, I'd love to see that kind of comparative matrix in the, in the package.
Okay, great.
Enjoyed looking at this report. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Dixon.
Just a very quick question. All right, was there any, I know some other jurisdictions have challenged some of the CAL FIRE designations based on, they are claiming that their designations are based on old data. San Luis Obispo, for instance, claims that they used 2015 vegetation data and that it improperly put, you know, a certain neighborhood or a new development that had come in after that into this very high fire hazard zone, and the property owners had a lot of concern and all that good stuff. So I just was wondering if the city, just how the, maybe the fire department or city staff just queried if, what data CAL FIRE was using? Because I think the folks who've lived here for a long time know that the fire hazard data is from the people in the park down there. The most the fires started were not spontaneous combustion from climate change or whatever. It's human-caused fires, and it's kind of an annual event. We have a fire down in Talbot Park, sometimes multiple times a year. So I just, there are, there are consequences for this designation to the property owners over there, potentially as far as insurance and resale and all that good stuff. So I just want to make sure that, that we're comfortable with those, with that designation. It's not just, oh, here's what CAL FIRE says. I, I'm just curious, who would have made that inquiry, if was made?
So thank you for that question. We, the fire department is currently looking at a draft of the, the safety element to identify, to acknowledge the fact that, yes, it is identified as a very high fire hazard safety zone. And they've provided languages to strengthen our fire requirements within the city overall. It was not made aware to me that we are currently fighting the, or challenging those maps, but I'm happy to follow up with fire and find out if we are.
My experience is that challenging is unilaterally unsuccessful, but I was just hoping that they had a better understanding of why that designation occurred after all these years. When, you know, I've lived here since the early 90s, and we've had fires in Talbot Park or, you know, Fairview and all that whole area the whole time. So it is a hazard zone for fire, but it's something that perhaps could be addressed with other measures as far as more taking care of some of the problems that start the fires down there. So anyway, thank you.
I was thinking about adding that the fire severity hazard zone also has some implications for the development process, but sometimes they're not as impacting as you might think. So it might be beneficial to provide sort of the implications of that change in zone. And if it just, sometimes it's just limited to what landscaping can be planted versus just even, you know, materials and those types of things. So we can provide a highlight of that when we come back.
Well, and the defensible space is implicated because of the hillsides. So all those along Pacific. That might be a prohibitively expensive exercise for those HOAs. And so, you know, there's that. I mean, as far as new development, I hope all, all new development uses hardened materials to prevent from fire, I think, going forward.
And I think the implementation of that revised designation also comes at different thresholds, so we can highlight that as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Martinez.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to ask, there's a bunch of maps in the safety element, wonderful. Are they all getting updated, or is it just, I mean, we have fire and flood as two separate attachments? Is it just those? Which ones are getting updated? Do we know?
So they're all being looked at to see which ones need to be updated or which ones are constant. Typically, let's say like seismic maps, really, you don't see much change over a 10-year period, so that might be a perfectly acceptable map to keep in there, but we are looking at all of them.
Yeah, the, the one I was looking at might be the, the first one, geologic units, which looks like it's about oil wells. So it'd be good to have that information, see if there's any updates on that. I wanted to ask about the cap and how it will inform the safety element update.
Well, we're not agendized to discuss the cap, but the cap is an effort that we're doing, so I'm going to look to our assistant city attorney or planning manager to see if that's something I can discuss.
Can you ask that question again, please?
Commissioner Martinez asked about the cap, and am I allowed to, since it's not agendized, are we allowed to discuss the cap?
You can, it can be discussed briefly, but no action can be taken on it.
Okay. So thank you for clarifying that. Just want to make sure we're all on the brown act. So yes, we are also partaking on a climate action and adaptation plan endeavor, which you are all aware of, I believe. And that is a component, sustainability overall, you know, it's a kind of a three-pronged thing. But for the safety element itself, that really relies on technical information and the information found in the local hazard mitigation plan. So this will be adopted first. We will continue moving forward with the climate action and adaptation plan. And then if there's additional policies that come out of that, but the goal is for all three of these documents to be consistent. But because the safety element is more of a technical document that is an overall planning tool, basically, for emergencies and hazards, it's not one that will rely on the cap, but it will be consistent with the cap, the local hazard mitigation plan, and the safety element.
Okay. Just wanted to show that because you mentioned that the safety element will include climate change risks, and I'm sure that will be prevalent in the cap.
Yes, and that's a good point, because the vulnerability assessment that we're relying on as part of the cap does come from the local hazard mitigation plan. And so therein ties the three documents together.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Rojas.
Yeah, really, Commissioner Dixon, I already asked a question that I was going to ask, but I just wanted to make a comment more than anything else, and I really enjoyed the report. I really appreciate the way you guys put this together, but this was by far one of my favorite reports I've read this year. So thank you very much for sharing that information.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Gregg, could you pull up slide six in your presentation? Had to do with benefits. This is going to seem like an odd question following Commissioner Rojas. So my general question, and I say this with, with respect and genuine curiosity, what if we didn't update the safety element right now? What, what position would that put the city in any sort of jeopardy?
I'll look to the assistant city attorney. Well, it is part of our housing plan, and so we have committed to updating it as part of our housing element, so we would be in violation of that. In addition to that, there are requirements by state law that says that we have to update it and keep it current with most reliable information. That typically does happen following a local hazard mitigation plan.
So it's highly recommended that it be adopted.
Right. Okay. I, I understand that, and I'm not saying this lightly. It's just, you know, so I look at this benefits, maintaining eligibility for state and federal funds. Are we not eligible for those now? Do we need to do this to make sure we're in good standing?
We have the local hazard mitigation plan, which really is the detailed analysis that we need. But as part of it, yes, government code does say that they need to be consistent and updated when we have that current data information. So we're following suit with that.
Okay. I mean, my, my general comment on this is, is I'm just concerned that we're going to devote a lot of staff time, especially if this is citywide effort, when we have, to my mind, much higher priorities from a planning perspective. So the rezoning, to me, is the most critical thing, and if this detracts from that or delays that, this gives me a lot of pause, so.
So I will tell you, that's why it's in my bucket and not one of your staff members' buckets right now as a consultant for the city. So I'm taking, spearheading this on. Just so you're aware, the review is almost complete by staff already because it was an update on technical information. We already had the local hazard mitigation plan. It went through our regular development review process here within the city. So we're really close to the finish line at this point, if, if that helps.
Yes, and, and just to be clear, I'm not commenting on the value of doing this. It is valuable. I'm just saying, as a matter of priority and timing, it may be questionable. Okay. If there are no other comments, I'm going to, Commissioner Andrade.
Yeah, it was a really great read, looking at the maps and understanding different soils, where the fault lines. It was greatly informative for, for those folks, and, and I appreciate your kind of, you know, the efforts and hearing your last comment that we're almost at the finish line here as we're about to embark on major rezoning, and this will help right, guide us for some of those land use decisions and also keeping us prepared and ready for any potential disaster. So thank you for lining up the efforts to keeping our communities safe.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Zick, do you want to? We're not ready to make a motion. We got to open, open a public hearing. Sorry. So open for public comments. If you'd like to speak on this item, please come to a lectern and see, we have one person. All right. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just had a question about, since we just had COVID, that I didn't see where in the safety plan, because you did include that it was part of the public health and safety. That would fall in to have some kind of preparedness or emergency response to that kind of situation in terms, you know, for the public. And also, we, we do have a safety issue with, we've had, I don't know what you want to call them, but people who are, we don't know who they are, but they're coming in and kidnapping our residents, you know, for whatever reason. So what, how, where does that fall into this safety element? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We've exhausted public comment in chambers. Anna, is there anybody on phone or Zoom?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Any further questions, commissioners? Vice Chair Zick, do you want to make a motion?
Moved to receive and file.
Okay. Moved by Vice Chair Zick, seconded by Commissioner Dixon. Do you want to speak to your motion? Okay. All right. Let's call for the question.
That motion carries seven, zero.
All right. Almost done. Let's see. Departmental reports. All right, almost done. Let's see. Departmental reports, Public Services, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So good evening, Mr. Chairman, and also Vice Chair Jake and Honorable Members of the Planning Commission. For tonight's Public Works Report, we're excited to report there will be three bicycle safety and education community events, or also called as rodeos, to wrap up this year. There will be one per month starting this month of September, and the final one being in the month of November. So the first one is the teen e-bike event at T. Winkle Middle School. That's on Saturday, September 27th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This particular event will have a focus on e-bikes. Second one will be the community event Saturday, October 25th, at the Senior Center. That's 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And lastly, the third event will be on Saturday, November 22nd, at City Hall, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. So all these three events will focus on bike skill safety, along with interactive activities for one and for all. So therefore, consider joining one or more of these bike education events. That's it for the Public Works Report. Defer back to the Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Yang. Development Services, Ms. Carone?
Thank you very much. I have a couple of reports to share. First, I just want to highlight a couple of the upcoming city council items that are going to be reviewed. Hive Live is going to be heard for the first reading by the city council on October 7th, 2025. 3150 Bear Street was approved on September 2nd, a second reading by the council. And the zoning code technical update that the commission saw recently is scheduled for a first reading on September 16th, 2025. And then I have some updates for the neighborhoods where we all belong workshops that are upcoming. The next workshop is the North Costa Mesa Sobeco Workshop, which will be Wednesday, September 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It's proposed at 150 Paula Reno Avenue, Building B. It's the Culture Yard. And this workshop will focus on housing and commercial industrial properties north of the 405 and the South Bristol Entertainment Cultural Arts District and some parts of Baker Street. So come on out if you are available. We also have additional new pop-up outreach programs that have sort of started to roll out. We had a recent pop-up at Coffee Nature last Friday. We have proposals for September 9th at Moon Goat Greenhouse at the Park Center Drive location. There's a small pop-up at 602 Coffee in Asai this Thursday, September 11th, and also September 17th at Moon Goat Coffee on the Placentia location from 9:00 to 10:30 AM. All of these are updated on the website, which is costamasonneighborhoods.com and also on social media. They are somewhat fluid and popping up as businesses are accepting them, and they're coming quickly. But we're working very hard to make sure they're all up on the website and available. So if you're tracking that, you should be able to get the up-to-date information. We'll also be at a booth at the Hispanic Heritage Celebration on September 27th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at Lyons Park Lawn. So come out not only for neighborhoods where we all belong, but to celebrate that great event. And then there will still be approximately five other pop-ups throughout the next three weeks. And that concludes my updates for today.
Okay. Thank you very much. Lastly, Mr. Preziosi, anything from the City Attorney?
Nothing this evening. Joe Harlan.
Okay. I will adjourn the meeting.